Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 10th, 2021, meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 6th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood, may we have a roll call, please?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here, here.
Here. Just to note, Mr. Kidd, I think is setting up and he is here. Now all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence that we received as listed. And I also wanted to thank the public for their emails, their multiple emails. We tried to be responsive. Unfortunately, between the last meeting and this meeting, we did receive quite a lot of emails that I was not able to keep up with on an individual basis, which is what I do strive to do. Because of that, we earlier tonight had scheduled a question and answer session with the public outside of our regular board meetings so that we could have a conversation with the public by taking their questions through a Google form and then responding. And I do believe we got through all of the questions with some follow-up to come. The other thing that I did mention at the Q and A session is that superintendents have a weighty job in this pandemic. The health and safety of students and staff is of utmost importance to all superintendents, and Dr. Intunez is no different. She has 7,200 students and 1,100 staff that she is making decisions for keeping them safe in this pandemic, and we thank her for her strong leadership there. So with that, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence, as I said, and then move along to the superintendent's report. Dr. Intunez.
Thank you, Mrs. Trigia. Okay, so it's a pleasure to share some good news around the district tonight. Congratulations to Hillsborough student Erica Balanski-Zaminski, who, along with other Somerset County VOTech students, competed against other career and technical ed students from around the state as part of the 2021 New Jersey Skills USA Championship Team Works Competition. For the first time, Eric and his team were gold medal winners. They are now eligible to test their skills at the upcoming Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference. Congratulations to Eric and all VOTech students who competed. That... From January through May, our Hillsborough Raiders math team engaged in a math challenge sponsored by the Math Honor Society and Emporia State University to locate Pythagoras. This is the first year Emporia State opened up their math challenge to high school students outside of Kansas. Over 50 schools participated across the country, with Hillsborough being the only team on the East Coast. The competition consisted of eight challenges, and each time the team correctly solved the challenge, they were given a hint to find where Pythagoras was hiding. Our team is one of seven teams in the advanced division that has correctly guessed where Pythagoras is up to this point, that qualifies them for the final round. Congratulations to the high school team Cindy Deng, Nippon Banjari, Livia Kong, Rishva Patel, Amy Wang, and Isham Debna. On March 8th, I had the pleasure of sharing that eighth grader Julia Sauer won the regional competition in National History Day. Julia advances to the next level of competition and recently won the individual website junior division and is now representing New Jersey in the National History Day competition in June. Not only that, she also won an additional prize, Revolutionary War history sponsored by the North Jersey Revolutionary War Roundtable. We're all rooting for you in the national competition, Julia. As stated in my communications on last Friday, virtual Wednesdays will be eliminated beginning the week of May 17th. Schools will continue to run on the abbreviated schedule. It's also a pleasure to share with parents, students, and staff that because we have one remaining emergency day in this year's calendar, all schools will be closed on Friday, May 28th, 2021, as of 7:35 on May 10th. As much as we all look forward to a four-day weekend, please be mindful that should we need to use an emergency day prior to May 28th, schools will be open on that day. But as of right now, they're closed. I would like to once again reassure the entire community that at this time, we are planning for a full return to school in September 2021, as close to our September 2019 as possible, opening as possible, barring any mandates, constraints, or restrictions from the state. We will continue to share information should there be any changes. We continue to receive notifications of local COVID-19 vaccination clinics. Sometimes they come to us hours before they're available, so we'll try to continue to show that information as much as possible. And then the last thing I wanted to share that just came through as a last-minute thing is that the governor issued a proclamation that May 9th through May 15th is Special Education Week, so I'd like to read that. It says, "State of New Jersey Executive Department proclamation, whereas more than 214,522 children receive special education instruction and services in New Jersey's public and private schools; and whereas more than 13,441 children who receive special education instruction and services are enrolled in preschool and early intervention programs in New Jersey; and whereas thousands of parents, teachers, child study team members, and school administrators generously give their time and energy to support the learning needs of students who receive special education; and whereas since 1985, the New Jersey School Boards Association and ASAH, serving the private special education community since 1974, have sponsored Special Education Week in New Jersey; and whereas the public school districts and the private schools of New Jersey make a major contribution to the public welfare by preparing thousands of exceptional persons to participate as citizens of this and as members of society. Now therefore, I Philip D. Murphy, Governor of the State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim, May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as Special Education Week." So I'd like to read that too. So, and that is it for this evening superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Intunez. I'd like to move on to committee reports, which actually, I would like to do a short board goals review as to the status. In the first goal that the board has, which is the board is committed to improving board governance practices and increasing committee and board effectiveness, I'd like to report back that school boards, as of back in February 19, prior to even adopting these goals, I reached out to school boards and there were 10 districts in front of us. There are now three districts in front of us in terms of the policy review, and school boards has indicated that they expect to be able to give us our policy review shortly. So hopefully, I will have an update at the next board meeting as to the status. The next one is that the school boards, we will be doing appropriate board training, and we have scheduled pending, assuming that there's no executive session for the May 24th board meeting. Prior to that board meeting, we will do a board training with our field services representative, Gwen Thornton. The second board goal, which is with respect to communications, improving communications with all stakeholders. We just had a Q and A session earlier tonight, from 6:00 to 7:00, trying to answer questions from the public as best as possible. In addition, at the April 26 budget hearing, we approved a position of a community outreach coordinator slash central registrar position, so that position is in the process of being filled. And furthermore, there will be an update to the board's website with respect to chain of communication and information on board members with photos, you can recognize us without the masks, and also just some background information on us. And also, with respect to the township officials, we are having ongoing meetings. And now I would like to turn it over to Ms. Statz for an update on the municipal alliance and other committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trigia. Regarding the municipal alliance, first of all, just want to make everyone aware that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And this Wednesday, there will be a virtual dirt assembly for freshmen on Wednesday morning from 8:30 to 9:45. It's a one-man show. John Morello portrays a variety of characters experiencing a variety of issues. And that same evening, Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 6:30, there will be a performance by John Morello that's similar to what he will be providing for the freshmen. And like I said, that will be provided for the parents at 6:30 PM, and that will also be virtual. And this Friday, May 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, there will be a mental health fair called Hope for Tomorrow that will be at the municipal complex, and it will be held outside. And there will be many tables addressing a variety of topics related to mental health, as well as activities and music for all ages. So we welcome everybody to come to, again, that's the Hope for Tomorrow, Tomorrow Mental Health Fair this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the municipal complex. Thank you, Ms. Trigia.
Thank you, Ms. Statz, for the report. And now, Mr. Kidd, I'd like to turn it over to you for the delegate assembly resolution discussion.
Thank you. So can you guys hear me? Thank you. So I just wanted to go over the fact that later this month, I'm going to be going to the delegate assembly, and we're going to be voting on a resolution proposed by the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education. I'm going to be reading out the synopsis, the reasons and the changes proposed. Resolution number one from the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education, Essex County, proposed revised policy language to express the belief that it is important to cultivate inclusive, affirming, and welcoming school communities that contribute to the overall safety, pedagogy, and school climate, and to support and work with board members in the school districts to create greater awareness, to ensure continued safety, support student engagement, and implementation of best practices and policies of all students, including those who are perceived as being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning, or who are LGBTQ+. Statements of reasons are: Current NJSPA policy recognizes the necessity of creating an inclusive and supportive school climate for all students, regardless of any perceived differences. Those beliefs are reflected by NJSPA actions where appropriate, including the creation of model local board policies on these issues and supporting legislative and governmental actions in this regard. Adding more specific content to NJSPA's belief statements regarding gender identity or expression and affectional or sexual orientation would further support efforts to create a positive school climate and acceptance for all students, leading to a more safe and secure student environment to enhance student achievement. The actual recommendations of changes to policy are: NJSPA believes that students have the right to be educated in environment-free discrimination and intimidation of both mutual respect and acceptance among the students regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religious belief, physical ability, and this is the part that has been added, gender identity or expression, affectional or sexual orientation, and perceived difference. Students should be expected to treat each other with respect and should not be subjected or subject or subject other students to demeaning remarks whether discriminatory and/or intimidating statements and/or actions. The NJSPA believes that students' acts of discrimination and/or intimidation should not be tolerated. Proven acts of discriminatory practices should result in disciplinary action. And this is an entire, this is an entire point that has been added by itself. The NJSPA believes that local school boards and districts should make all necessary and appropriate efforts to raise awareness, employ best practices, and create an inclusive, safe, and positive school climate for all students, including those that are actual or perceived as being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, or other sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. Basically, it's about creating a statement of beliefs of the NJSPA and the school boards of New Jersey that allows those, that allow those school boards or even legislation from the state to be supported or be gone against by that belief. Are there any, is there any discussion about, from the board about this?
So I think, so what I'll do is I'll jump in. With respect to delegate assembly, typically, the board will give the delegate a guidance as to whether the delegate should vote yes or no on this, this resolution. And I would propose that if, why, why, open it to the floor to board members to discuss. I'm in favor of Hillsborough supporting this resolution, and I'd like to see if the board is in agreement or if there is any discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Kidd.
I would like to say that I'm personally in favor of it because it is pretty non-invasive, and it will allow for school boards that see that there's a problem that is affecting the demographics of the students that are detailed in the resolution, allow them to more easily enact policy that can help these students succeed academically and contribute to society. And it will also allow for more, for the opinions of the various school boards throughout the state to be known at the state level so that any legislation can either be agreed or disagreed with.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. And just to further add to it, when we were at the school boards resolution subcommittee, the school boards policy person said that the existing policy for school boards was consistent with South Orange Maplewood's proposed resolution, and that this particular piece of language extended with the included language and also was meant to be inclusive and not just non-discriminatory. So seeing no comments from, oh, Mr. Pulcifer.
Yeah, I think this is on the face. I mean, I think it's a good idea to consider this new subgroup, if you will, of different groups of students who may be treated unfairly, unkindly by their peers. But I do worry that as we get more specific in the language, anybody who is not listed specifically could be viewed as not being covered. And that's, the one concern I have is that are the policies as they stand, by not, by not naming specific groups that much, leaves it as a much well-understood general approach of be nice. I mean, that's really what this comes down to. My only concern would be as we start to list very specific groups, does that mean if you're not on that list, somehow you're not? So I would worry that if we, as this continues, if we keep adding to the list, you leave the, anybody who's not on the list out in the cold. So I think that's something to be considered as part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Mr. Kidd?
Yeah, I definitely see your sentiment, but from the language presented, I think it was designed to be, to make the language almost more open-ended, to allow a variety of groups that aren't presented, that aren't really represented here, to be represented within that. So it doesn't name every single sexual orientation, identity, or expression merely provides the idea of the fact that this is a factor that people are discriminated against, based upon. So it just allows for the acknowledgement of that and then for appropriate protections based on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. So I would, Mr. Gillette, and then Mr. Pulcifer.
Just, okay, just real quick. I, I tend to agree with Chris. I mean, there, it'd be a difficult task to try to come up with everything that defines like kids or split kids. I mean, there's, you know, do the vegan kids pick on the meat lovers? I mean, do they need to be protected or the opposite? There's all kinds of, I mean, you know, I think the list is pretty, you know, itself is pretty inclusive now, but I don't think we can get to all of it. So I tend to side with Mr. Pulcifer on this angle, but I wouldn't be opposed to throwing our support behind it.
Mr. Pulcifer?
The reason I brought that up is not that I'm concerned that I have a problem with this language. It's just that this starts us down the path of another group saying, well, we're not on the list lobbying or otherwise escalating so they can get on the list, and then another group. And just, my concern is that these, these things have a tendency to keep on going. But once you start down that path, if you're not on the list, suddenly you're left out. So I'm not suggesting that this is a problem here, but these tend to feed another group saying, well, we want to be on the list. And once you start being specific, you better be specific about everybody or your, your. So I don't, again, it's not about this language. It's about what I'm concerned this could start as follow-up steps that open the door for somebody to say, well, you're not on the list, therefore, I can say what I want. So just something to be considered.
Fair point, Mr. Pulcifer. So seeing no further comments, Mr. Lapira, in terms of delegate assembly with respect to, is this just, the board doesn't necessarily vote on this? We're just giving guidance to Mr. Kidd. So, so then with no objections, then, I guess it's, with no objections, it appears that the Hillsborough Board of Education does support this resolution? Okay.
I agree.
So, thank you, Mr. Kidd, for representing Hillsborough and being our representative at the delegate assembly. And I highly recommend for our fellow board members, it's a great, it's a great opportunity to learn about the inner workings of school boards. You just kind of, they do a lot of reports. It's Saturday morning, like 9:00 to 12:00. It's not that long, and you learn a lot about how school boards works. Okay, so moving along, thank you, Mr. Kidd. The approval of the public minutes for April 26, 2021. May I have a motion and a second?
I moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer, and thank you, Ms. Nurse. No, Ms. Maroon, thank you. All in, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, Mr.?
Hi. Well, I just, I had a minor change that I discussed with Ashley via text, you know, with my thumbs, discussed it with her earlier today, that the summary description, the one sentence of a remark that I said didn't really make sense. I said, if you wanted to summarize a lot that I said last, if you were summarizing that part of it, I said that I'd like to ensure that the district standards remain high, and the minute said, standards between the administration and the board remain high, but that didn't even make sense. I don't even know what that is. That's not what I was saying. So I said that, and she said that that would be changed. So I think we're, I don't know what the exact language is going to be, but that's what it's going to be. So just wanted to say that first.
We would accept these minutes with those changes to be made afterwards.
Okay, thank you. So it sounded like all in favor, was I? Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, great.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now it is time for input from the public and the board on the action agenda. And so are there any comments from the board before I open it up to the public on anything on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, then I will now read the statements. "We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so via Zoom in person if they are attending in person, or via written comments sent by a letter or email. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. If time remains in this public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 167. Before you state your question or comments, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are opportunities for you to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in the public session." So I will now turn it over to folks who are in the room with us for any public comments. Mr. Cooper? So I believe there's a podium where you can make your way over to make public comments so that we can hear you. For the audience, for the people who are watching at home, Mr. Cooper is over at the public podium for connecting to the Zoom webinar. So we'll just have a moment. So while we're waiting, actually, if there's anybody else in the room who has a device, do you have a device? Okay. What's your name? Jessica Palmer. Okay, if, if, okay, Mr. Cooper, I will allow her to speak first. Ms. Palmer, you are... Ms. Palmer, whenever you're ready, you're a panelist? Can you try again? Is that working? Yes.
Jessica Palmer, 579 Hillsborough Road. "Good evening, Dr. Intunez, Mrs. Trigia, and Board of Education. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the class of 2033 for COVID kindergarteners. I think we all know the famous saying, 'Everything I need to know, I learned in kindergarten.' Unfortunately, time and again, this district has placed the unique educational and social needs of the class of 2033 last. We know that many five-year-olds struggle to learn through remote instruction. We also know that younger students are less likely to transmit or be seriously impacted by COVID infection. As a result, many districts in New Jersey and across the country have prioritized early elementary students, including kindergarteners, for return to in-person learning. Unfortunately, Hillsborough has not followed suit. Tonight, I'd like to ask the Board of Education to take action on three key issues affecting kindergarten students and families. Last week, on Friday, Dr. Intunez announced that all students in all grades would have the opportunity to return to the classroom for five days a week for in-person instruction. Several hours later, school principals were left to clarify that this expansion of in-school time does not apply to kindergarteners. While I understand that Hillsborough runs a half-day kindergarten program, it seems unfair that kindergarteners are now receiving less than half of the in-person instruction granted to other students. Many kindergarten students are now seeing older siblings attend school five days a week, while they are only eligible for two half-days of instruction. Please reconsider whether you could permit kindergarten classes to alternate Wednesdays in the classroom. Every minute of in-person instruction is vital for our kindergartners. I have also asked the Board of Education several times to increase transparency with parents who have pulled their children from the district for this year due to the pandemic. As acknowledged by Mrs. Trigia at the last board meeting, many kindergarten families have done this because they do not have the ability to support their students in virtual instruction. On a personal note, I have kept my daughter in a private kindergarten program this year at great personal and financial expense, knowing that my husband and I do not have the ability to support virtual instruction since we both work full-time. We have re-enrolled her for first grade in the fall, and yet we do not receive communications from the district regarding the phase-in, phase-out plan, which makes it very hard to evaluate how the district is moving forward or plans for Fall 2021 really look like. I would encourage the board to create a communications hub so the entire Hillsborough community can review school communications and understand the district's future plans. Many other districts have done this. We shouldn't have to hear everything second-hand. Finally, I have written several times to request information regarding the reopening of Hillsborough's school playgrounds, but have not yet received a response, which I understand was addressed during the FQ earlier. Recent guidance from CDC makes clear that fomite transmission, particularly outdoors, is unlikely. Municipal, county, and state playgrounds have been open since July 2020. It is time to reopen Hillsborough's school playgrounds as well. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Palmer. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Cooper at the public mic. Mr. Cooper, whenever you're ready. Mr. Cooper, can you hold for just one moment? Are you having trouble hearing him? All right, maybe if you sit, like, with a, that might help.
Brett Cooper, are you hearing now?
A little better. I'll try.
Brett Cooper, 133 Turhune Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. A little side note, this is one reason why we need to have our kids in school and not through technology. But I digress. Um, I brought this up several times. I brought it up to the principal. But I digress. I brought this up several times, I brought it up to the principal, I brought it up, I'll bring it up again in public forum, regarding related arts. It seems like related arts, which classified as music, art, gym, foreign language, library have been delegated to second-class citizens. In the elementary schools, they're only done after school in what are still instructional hours, but a lot of kids are shut off by then, as is indicated by the administration and by the principal. Kids are more alert in the morning, so we're going to do academics or what they consider academics and not related arts. These teachers are getting paid, these teachers are great teachers, they're getting paid a premium to be in our district, they're not being allowed to do their job. Our class has been delegated to 100 kids on a Zoom or on a Google Classroom once a week or once every six days, they send home materials that don't come, I mean, we got paint materials that came home and it was all over the bag. I don't have supplies at my house, I don't have a kiln at my house, I don't have art supplies at my house that I could do this. Kids need to be hands-on art in class, music class, again, delegated to an 80-person Zoom, this is bigger than a college lecture class. I, I would say we can't have 80 kids in any classroom in this building or in the district, but it's okay to teach class to 80 kids on a Zoom, and that's an interactive, productive class. I mean, you, you've all been on Zoom, you've all seen adults on Zoom, you've all seen kids on Zoom. They're not paying attention, they're not interacting. Kids aren't going to ask a question in front of 80 kids that they don't know. I don't know why we can't have related arts in part of the half-day, we do it when we have a snow day, when we send kids home early, when we only have half-days for other reasons, we find time to get related arts in there. Or as an alternative, why can't related arts be done in smaller groups? Rather than teaching 20 classes every six-day cycle, our related arts teacher is teaching four classes or five classes, one for each subject. I think we really need it, and included in related arts is reach. Reach, again, is an academic class, there could be time in the half-day to pull kids out that need it, and reach, they pull them out for reading, they pull them out for other subjects, why can't they pull them out for reach? I think we need to get the kids back in school full days and not treat our non-academic quote subjects as second-class citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Cooper. Are there any other comments from people who are in the room with us tonight? And what is your name? Oh, you're going to go there? Okay. Yep, go ahead. Can you hear me? Yes. My name is Erling Conway, I live at 587 On Road. Just to begin with tonight, I do want to acknowledge that you all have been charged with making some very difficult decisions, and I want to thank you for making the best possible decision you could have made at the time with the information you had. That being said, I have a few questions. Are we going to get an itemized list of all the money that's spent from the CARES Act? I think we should, I think we're entitled to that as parents and as taxpayers. COVID dashboard. I want to know if there's exposures, if there, you're saying that you can't, in the meeting beforehand, you said you're not going to tell if they're teachers, if they're students. I think we need to know that, because I think the decisions that are being made are not necessarily made based on cases. The other thing I want to know is the severity of the cases, because if we're keeping our children home because someone has a sniffle and possibly doesn't have COVID, then that, that's not okay. Our children aren't being educated the way they should be, and I think it's time for us as parents to stand up and tell you guys that you've done enough, you've made decisions, now it's our turn, parents, to make decisions. The other thing is, is I found out my 14-year-old is wearing a mask outside during gym. Want to tell me how healthy that is for a kid to be running around? She was choking on the threads of her mask because she was running around trying to catch her breath. Parents have learned that decisions made regarding their education, health, and decisions that their own children are not theirs, and they apparently have no control over decisions being made. This has been very eye-opening for me as a parent. I would have hoped that the school district, the school board would have actually preferred to create a roundtable and actually had parents involved in these decisions, in making these decisions for our children. The school board works for us. The teachers have their unions, the teachers have their leaders, you guys work for us, and I understand you all have children. And I'm not saying that it were easy decisions, but I do think that we made a mistake here. They should have been made with the parents in the school district. I suggest that a roundtable is created regarding any decisions moving forward about closing schools, changing schedules, half-day, full-day, no fourth-grade day, no prom, these are big moments in these children's lives, and we took them all away from them. You really need to consider in September the damage that we did to these children this past year. It's definitely my suggestion that there be a more cohesive decision-making process in the future. My other question is this. As far as guidelines, are we going on CDC guidelines? The CDC guidelines already changed, and we haven't changed them in the school district. Moving forward, I would like a commitment that if you guys are going to make these decisions, you're going to go by the CDC guidelines, not guidelines that are given to you by the governor, not guidelines that are given to you by a teachers' union. You are going to use the CDC guidelines. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your public comment, Ms. Conway. Are there any other comments from people who are in the room with us tonight? Seeing none, then I will move to, oh, sorry, Henry. Go ahead, let me let me find you. There we go. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Goodhue.
Mr. Goodhue, Hillsborough. I would just like to say a couple of things and perhaps a few clarifiers, and I would also note that as a Hillsborough parent myself, I have
Mr. Goodhue, you're garbled on the, could you just maybe connect, check your connection?
Are you able to hear me?
Better, thank you.
So, as I said, I speak as a Hillsborough parent myself. I'm very proud to have my students, my children, go to these schools. I will say that one of the highlights of my daughter's day is her related arts program. The teachers have done a phenomenal job transitioning to this new way of teaching, and it is one of the things that she looks forward to every day. So I absolutely give my thanks to every single person who has revolutionized their craft to make sure that they are trying to meet the needs of the students. I also, you know, there was a comment about whether or not the teachers' union gives guidelines, we don't. We give feedback representative of what we're seeing on the front lines, what we're seeing in the classroom, but we don't give case, and we don't give guidelines. We're beholden to the same state federal guidelines and everywhere else, and we do appreciate that there has been conversation and consideration as we've gone forward with the phase-in and phase-up plan, but I just want to be clear that it's not a mandate from us in any capacity like that. I understand absolutely the concerns that parents have, because as I said, I myself am a parent. And I think we're all striving for normal, I think we're all looking to get back to that space, and I think the frustration that all of us share is that that place is going to elude us quite a bit this year, because no matter what we do, nothing will feel normal for our kids. And there is nothing that is frustrating or more frustrating to a parent than feeling like you can't give that to your child. And I say that as a parent myself. I can appreciate where everyone comes from, but I can also attest to the fact that every single person in these buildings and in this room are sharing that goal and trying to find that and certainly seeking that normal for our students. I know we're inching towards that, you know, we heard in the Q and A that there's certain things that are going on, we're going back to five half-days of the Wednesday, we're looking at what can be done in the district. I've heard Mr. Moose say repeatedly in the, in the Q and A that we're looking at opening the playgrounds back. And I know we didn't have an operations report tonight, but I hope that soon we'll hear that the second playground at ATS is open. So I look forward, all of those steps we can take to give that back to our kids. And I just want to be clear that we all share that goal. I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodhue. Are there any, are, so I can't tell, Jennifer Copan, are you in the room, or anybody else in the room who would like to speak? Seeing none, then I will go to Jennifer Copan on the virtual room, promote to panelist. There you are. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Copan.
I'm sorry, this is my first time ever doing this. I teach like this, but I don't do these types of meetings. My name's Jennifer Copan, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Sunny Need. My address is 53 Edinburgh Court in Hackastown, New Jersey. This is the first time I've actually ever spoken at a Board of Ed meeting ever, and I just felt compelled to do so, because while we've navigated through the year, and there's been bumps, there's been changes, there's been, you know, a lot of things like that, I finally felt, and I felt it like in the school, in the district, in my class, with my parents, that we were kind of coming to the end of this roller coaster year, and we were still all seated, buckled in, you know, we made it. And then the thought of, or just the suggestion of trying to get to full day at the elementary level with, I mean, 20 days by the time, if we, if we rushed it, I, I just, I don't see the risk-reward scenario there. And I don't want to speak to scheduling spaces, numbers, my job as a teacher is to represent, you know, who it really affects, and I'm excited for September, I'm already looking to that. I'm trying to wrap up, give my kids a really enjoyable, finding a way to get it to be, you know, wrap it up and make it memorable in a good way, because they've done their resilient, they've adjusted, they've done a fantastic job, and they did learn. My fear is to change it for six- and seven-year-olds who have, the majority of them, if they've been in Hillsborough, would have never had ever had a full day of school, let alone a normal day of school, and to ask them to do that to me was so upsetting, and I feel like it's irresponsible, I feel it's detrimental. They, if you've ever been in September, what it's like in a normal situation to get those kids to build that, you know, to be able to have the stamina for the day, let alone now in the heat, I have no air conditioning and masks, then I have virtual students whose parents, now I hear some, but that's not the majority, it's not. Those virtual parents who chose to stay the whole time were of the understanding and have a year-plus in of a schedule that works. I would never allow my six or seven, and I have three children, to be on the screen remotely close to six or seven hours. I, I just don't know how, as a hybrid teacher, I have four in the classroom and 12 on the screen, that's, that's worrisome to me. And right now, I'm prepared and we're doing well. I think many people can attest to that. I just want to, I want to prepare for September. I think we need four months of preparation, if not more, to make it the most successful opening. And I think everyone wants to get there, I'm ready for it, it's not now. We have to be patient, we've been patient. We've done every adjustment that's possible, great, the Wednesdays, they don't need to be there anymore, we're ready to move forward five days, absolutely. But to try to do something, I, I just don't see it, I mean, maybe it could be, I just don't see it, just as for the sake of saying we did it? Not for this age group. I just, I think it would be setting up the in-person children's for failure, I really do. And I think it's abusive to have young children staring at a screen that long. And I've made adjustments in my teaching to make sure that they're getting enough of me, enough of independent work, enough of hands-on by sending materials home, enough of movement, because it matters, their mental health matters, it is Mental Health Month after all, so that's really, all I really need to say there, but it just was so strange, I, at first, when I heard that, I just, I, I didn't, I really think that was true, but when I heard that it was a discussion.
Ms. Copan, thank you very much for your public comments, I'm sorry, the three minutes are up.
Problem, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for, for sharing your, your perspective, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other, I'll get to you, Mr. Gillette, after the close of public comments. Are there any other comments from people in the room or online? If not, then I have, Mr. Mahmoud, are there any written comments besides the one the board received directly?
Hello, Mr. Gillette, I'll take a quick look. None, Mr. Gillette, that we have on record.
Okay, so we, if you, Ms. San Giuliano, if you would tie me for this, Mr. Albanese sent an email to the board that he requested to be read during public comments, so I will do that. To the Board of Education, on March 26, parents voiced the concern over the removal of advanced classes in ARIS. This is a huge problem. We are taking away from the children who continue to push themselves in the classroom, and now that will be taken away from them to be just average. While you're at it, take away the SAT slash New Jersey testing slash class testing and any other form of ability to test the skill of our students so that we can dumb down, all right, so we can dumb them down some more. These intelligent students apply themselves, take pride in their ability to solve problems ahead of their peers. Some may be smarter than any one of us, and we should be allowing them to excel, not to hold them back. It's, it is an atrocity, this is even a consideration. At the same meeting, Ms. Feltry had a PowerPoint with all these wonderful numbers on it. There is no way any of these numbers should have been allowed at this meeting, the school year is an abomination for the students and the teachers. No number can show how Hillsborough Township excelled in anything because it is far from that. We are far from where we were, and the superintendent is to blame. Our superintendent, sorry, our district would have done better with the schools being fully opened, but again, the superintendent dropped the ball. The board president stated that we are a different district. How are we different from Bridgewater with a larger population and as and just as many schools, they seem to be open five days a week. Mandville opened five days a week, Somerville slash Branchburg opened five days a week, and the list goes on, not Hillsborough. Our board president and superintendent cannot make a decision, they are given the ability to make decisions but fail to do so. Malfeasance is the word that comes to mind. At the last meeting, we had a board member speak out about what school will look like in the fall, yet our governor has indicated virtual will not be allowed. Why are we, why are we not ensuring the speed to resuming full-day classes five days a week with the same urgency your administration had with eliminating advanced classes for the ARIS schools? The board president stated, we are following CDC guidelines, the definition of that is a piece of information that suggests how something should be done, not this, not this is how we are doing it. I heard the words, quote, white privilege from board members, and cannot begin to understand the mixed messages sent to students and the community. You continually spew hate and racism in our community, which is hardly the case. It is completely mind-boggling that you would bring these concepts into a school board meeting. I want you all to remember something, you were elected and in the future may not be elected again. I proudly served our country with three tours in the Gulf, I have always lived by one main principle, you treat me with respect, I treat you with respect. I've tried hard to instill these, those principles in my children. I do not look at a man for the color of his skin, I've served with men of color, race, sorry, I've served with men of every color, race, and religion, and the only principle was, I have your back and you have mine. To the board member who mentioned white privilege and how her father was only afforded the military benefits is completely wrong. The GI Bill allows military personnel to go to The GI Bill allows military personnel to go to college or trade school, not buy homes. That is the VA loan. The GI Bill was offered in 1944 and the VA loan is based on credit. I guess you may do more research on this issue." So there's one more statement that basically continues the rest and that is me reading it verbatim from Mr. Jason Albanese, who has been at our board meetings in the past. He sent the meeting, the email prior. And seeing no other further comments, I will now close public comments and state that that was, that was me reading Mr. Albanese's letter on his behalf. So I will now open it up to the board. I think, Mr. Gillette, you had your hand up.
Uh, thank you. Um, we, we had a couple of comments today that are, are somehow related. We had public comment about, um, related arts. We also had public comment about the possibility of, for sometime this year, um, having children return for a full day of school. And when I heard those, those two public comments, I thought about an email that we received from the public this, in, in this past week, I think. Um, and maybe, uh, Ms. Trial remembers the email. Um, it was, uh, excuse me. It was, um, it stated something about, um, my, my child, it was from a parent, said, "My child is," I'm paraphrasing, obviously. "My child is, uh, all virtual. If we go to full day, will my child have to go to a, a full six and a half hours, um, in front of the computer? I can't see him doing that." But I'm, I'm confused now. Shouldn't the, don't they get related arts later in the day? Shouldn't they be having that now? And are all students required to come back on, like I guess after lunch or whatever it is, to be on, on the screen? I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't understand the email and I'm a little confused. So maybe, um, maybe Ms. Trial, you can explain? Why would a parent be concerned that their child, if we go to full day, that they're all virtual students who still be virtual, will now have to be on the screen for six and a half hours? Shouldn't they have already been doing that?
Well, so I can't speak to the elementary school as I don't have any personal experience there, but I do believe at Aris and the high school, the afternoons are for small group instruction. Students can also log on for extra help, as my children have done. At the high school, same thing. The teachers have office hours where you can get extra help and they also do, um, test review, et cetera. So I believe that if we were to go to full day for at least those schools, then those options would then go away. And you, I'm assuming you would extend the school day in terms of each period would have longer sessions. So does that answer?
Yeah, I understand. It's, it's a differentiation between the different grade levels. Some students are experiencing that now and some would move to that. Okay. I, thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Stats?
Uh, I just want to make a clarification regarding what Mr. Albanese said, um, when he was referencing something that I said, uh, the last board meeting regarding my father. Um, I even, thanks to his courtesy to submit his, uh, commentary via email, I was aware of what he, what his commentary was ahead of time. So I was able to check out the, uh, the video just to see if I mistakenly said something I didn't intend. Um, so what I did, I transcribed what I said from the last video, uh, the last board meeting. So I'm going to read word for word what I said. This was in reference to, uh, discussion about white privilege. Quote, "For instance, my father was able to purchase a house in an area where it was denied to blacks and we were able to get a very good education because of that. You know, geography makes a difference as far as especially back then, the quality of the schools." Just one examples. Another example, he was able to get a college education because of the GI Bill, which was denied to many people of color, if not all people of color. So that's just a small hint of an example of white privilege. Uh, I personally have been privileged to, and it continues to be an issue. Um, so that's the end of what I said. So I did not say at any point that the GI Bill, uh, had anything to do with, uh, the purchase of, uh, a house. But I, uh, truly have a lot of gratitude for Mr. Albanese, his, uh, military service and the sacrifice that he and his family had to undergo because of his service and sacrifice. And, uh, I extend a lot of respect to him, no matter what his opinion is. And I appreciate his passion on behalf of his children and all students, um, here in Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stats? Are there any other comments from the board? Oh, Mr. Kit.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, clarify on the previous comment that, uh, Mr. Gillette also discussed regarding the concerns of having a full day in virtual. I think the main concern is having, is just the mere mental fatigue and stress that it puts on a student to be virtual that long. A virtual day can already be either disengaging or stressful for many students. And I mean, COVID is what it is and many people are just doing what they can to get through it. And then have that renewed effort that once things go back to normal, we can put in that effort and really catch up. And I think that especially in the middle of the year, a lot of parents are concerned about not just now having that, uh, not just having that increased mental stress and fatigue from being, uh, on, uh, online for that amount of time. Also just the fact that we're transitioning in the middle of a year with, I think we only have 24, 28 days left, say, for the high school. I don't know about the other schools. So I, I just wanted to clarify the, uh, what I assumed the reasoning of those comments were.
Thank you, Mr. Kit. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, then we, um, I'll turn it over to Dr. Antunes for the action agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Trial. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 9 dot 1 to 9 dot 4. Motion to affirm, do you want to mute, Mrs. Trial? Motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, bullying determination for the attached cases. Motion to approve staff for summer credit advancement program as listed. Motion to approve the Eric North Safety Grant application for 2021, 2022. And motion to approve policies and regulations for second reading as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stats? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Merini. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mahmood, if we could have a roll call, please?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kit?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trial?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the human resources agenda as follows, 10 dot 1 to 10 dot 9. The motion to approve retirements and resignations as listed. And I'd like to, to commend the people who are retiring. Sylvia Kay's been with us just a year, but Tracy Nair has been with us twice. Once for 15 years and once for 14 years, for a total of 29 years. Steve Molinaro, 33 years. Cynthia Ortu, 22 years. Roderick Smith, 15 years. Barbara Vitanza, 31 years. And Walter Wine Coop, 17 years. Thank you for your service to the staff and students of Hillsborough. Uh, motion, and then, then we have our resignations there. Motion to approve the revised transportation aides hours as listed, as well as leaves of absence and appointments. Motion to approve appointments for 21, 22 and approve extra coverage. There's a motion to approve a renewal of non-tenured, certified staff and renewal of non-tenured HPSA staff for 21, 22. Motion to approve the renewal of non-tenured, unaffiliated administrators for 21, 22 as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mahmood, if we could have a roll call, please?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kit?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Mrs. Trial?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows, 11 dot 1, 11 dot 2. Uh, motion to accept donations as listed, uh, $3,000 in memoriam of Carol Gunter for Aris. And Nancy Schmidt from Bonnie Plants provided 70 vegetable plants, eight lettuce plants and 16 pansies for our high school's life skills program that the students do wonderful things with, as well as the, um, 11 dot 2, motion to approve policies and regulations for second reading as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kit?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Mrs. Trial?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmood and Dr. Antunes. So now, um, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for any comments on any item. Ms. Nurse?
Um, I brought up and talked about the de-tracking at our last meeting and have since had a couple of conversations with administration. But in thinking of Mr. Albanese's comments and I know there were questions that came in at the Q and A today. And again, I, I would like to talk a little bit more and, or investigate a little bit more about the process and where we are. Because after or during my conversations with administrators and at our last board meeting, it was said that it was not a final decision to move forward with de-tracking. However, the letters to both teachers and to the fifth grade parents was explicitly stated that it was moving forward. And I know, like I said, that I talked to administrators who said that that might have been, um, not communicated as it should have been. And that there were going to be pushing on the brakes. Um, and, and, and I was told about town halls and I, I believe I, I read about them. I'm still a little concerned that both either town halls or Q and A sessions that are coming up, I believe, one tomorrow. And I, I don't remember the second date, but that they're both at 3 o'clock, which, um, I think does a disservice to our community in terms of people who would like to attend or would like to give their input and are in the middle of the workday. So, um, I would recommend that at least one of those meetings is changed to an evening time. And I would also just like to, if there's somebody who can answer, like the process as it continues and maybe help the community understand why letters went out that were definitive, if we're not, if we don't have a final decision, um, in the name of transparency and, and making sure that the staff, the administration and the community are all of the same understanding of where we are in this process.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Fair point. I think that, um, when Dr. Antunes and I speak with this week, we'll be sure to chat about that and report back at the next board meeting. I think that, so, so in terms of history, and this doesn't really exactly help the situation, but the board learned about de-tracking as a concept at the last budget hearing in 2020, in April. And in retrospect, there wasn't very much discussion, from what I recall. I wasn't on education at the time, so I don't know if they had talked about it then. But nevertheless, there was not a public discussion about that. So that's a fair point in terms of this, this, um, I believe it was March, I could be wrong, could have been February, when the supervisors and Mr. Carey had reported back to the, or actually not reported. They, they gave a presentation at education committee. So I think that it's a fair point, Ms. Nurse, in terms of process as to how the community, community can be better informed and should provide input. Because as we have stated before, that the board meeting is the, the board's meeting to conduct its official business, not a question and answer session with the public. However, we do need to recognize that the community does have strong opinions on this, on this and many topics and that we do need to have a venue to hear that. And so, which is why we had the Q and A session earlier today. So let me, let me chat with the superintendent, Mr. Mahmood, about process and report back if that's okay with you.
Uh, that, that is great, but I just, if you could, if there's a way that you could talk with whoever you need to sooner rather than later, just because of those two Q and A sessions are both at 3 o'clock. I think that poses a, a big challenge to the community. So if you can at least talk quickly about if one can be moved or add a third time to, um, allow anybody who is working to have an evening session to talk about that.
Okay. Well, I would say that I believe that the initial, and this is not to, to detract from your point, Ms. Nurse. The initial Aris presentation livestream was on a Thursday evening, I believe, like 6:30 or so. That is now available on YouTube for parents to view. And actually, although it was only sent out to fifth grade parents, it is on the Aris website, so the link is available. So anybody can view it. There's also an associated frequently asked questions document and a bibliography of references. So I think that would be helpful for parents. And also I believe, as I watched Mr. Carey's video, he did say at the end that although there would be those town halls, there, he's, he's quite open to chatting with parents directly. Believe he said that. Could have been wrong. Ms. Stats? Do you, do you remember? Uh, not in particular. Okay. Sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just trying to think, because I actually watched the video, but I don't remember exactly. I thought he said that. But in any case, I'm sure Mr. Carey would, um, be open to that. Um, actually, Ms. Mr. Gillette, I saw his hand first and then Ms. Stats and then Ms. Nurse.
Uh, thank you very much. First, I want to, um, actually, I want to thank, um, Mr. Cooper for coming out tonight and advocating for, um, a better related arts experience. I, I, we don't get a lot of parents advocating for related arts. I, I don't know. I think most of the years I've been on the board, I think I've been the only one member who majored in, in college and anything to do with, um, the arts. So I'm sensitive to that and I, I appreciate you advocating for that. Uh, the last, um, board meeting, a member of the public spoke about some concerns about class sizes. And I think those concerns were really twofold. I think one was, um, just in general, class sizes are too big. And, uh, we, we get that criticism and concern. And secondly, about a timing of, um, well, if children move into the district in the summer and roll late, uh, it some, it could be too late to add another section. So class sizes actually rise above what our practice is or, or, you know, or what, what we, um, you know, if it's supposed to be 25, then it could get to 26 or 27, usually, you know, in a class over. So there were two concerns. Um, but I did, I did look, I did, after the meeting, spend some time looking for a policy about, uh, class sizes. And I also enlisted, um, uh, Ms. Sangiuliano, who's the Assistant Board Secretary, who, um, also looked for me. And I think Kate Shaughnessy in Dr. Antunes's office also looked. And we couldn't really find a policy. I don't believe the board, there is a, a board policy on class size. So if we said, um, last time that there is a board policy that the board votes on about class size, that's incorrect. There is no policy. I don't believe there's a policy on that. Um, so for what it's worth, uh, the board doesn't vote on a class size. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Ms. Stats?
Um, regarding the, the communications about de-tracking, I, I, I would like it, I, I believe it's only been going out to, uh, parents of fifth graders. If going forward, this is going to happen, I would think it would affect, uh, uh, future fifth graders. So I think all communications and opportunities for input should be extended to, um, parents of, of all grades K through five. So if that can happen, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Ms. Nurse?
I, I just wanted to cycle back to the de-tracking as well, because I understand what you had said, Mrs. Trial, about having one meeting prior to this in, in the evening. But I believe that was more informative. And now we're moving, if we're moving on to another step of the process, which is town hall. That's my understanding about this as a second step, not the same step. Then it should be open to, if we're doing a town hall for the public, it should be at a time where most of the public. it should be at a time where most of the public is able to go. So if we need to add a third meeting, I say we should do that.
Fair point, Ms. Nurse. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, then I will now open it up to the public who is in the room, if they have any comments. Mr. Cooper? Mr. Cooper, whenever you're ready. Yes. Well, try again?
Brett Cooper, can you hear?
It's sort of good.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, Brett Cooper, 133 Turhune. I just want to clarify, since no one on the board seems to have an elementary school student, which I thought was not true. But in terms of what Mr. Gillette said about the afternoon, and the discrepancy again, what's going on? Basically, elementary school students get out half day, like every other student in the district, they are supposed to log back on for related arts in the afternoon. How many do? I don't have the numbers, but judging from what the principal said on 80 kids on a art class of 100, and some kids, I'm saying around 80% do. It depends on the subject. It depends on the day. I'm sure there's a lot more that don't log on than do. This is a problem. The other kids, when the ARRIS, middle school, high schoolers, when they get out for the day, they're out for the day. They can come back and get help if they need it, but they're not required like supposedly our elementary school students are. So if we're requiring them to do it in the afternoon, why can't it be a required class that we could find time in the morning some days? Again, we do it on regular half days. They find time to fit it in the schedule. I don't know why that same schedule can't be used. Maybe every, maybe every other week, you have a different in-person or a different morning special. I mean, I don't know why the argument was during academics or in the morning because they're freshest. Well, some kids don't do well in math. Some kids don't do well in English, but they do well in art. They, they're in school because they like music. They're in school, and it continues what they like to do in college or not in college. Again, if we're cutting these off at a young age, when they're most impressionable, they won't continue on. Foreign language, again, my kid loved Mandarin. He sees Ms. Zhang every day. She's an aide in his classroom. She's not doing what we pay her to do. And that's to teach Mandarin at a young age, so they like foreign languages. That's the most time. They always say, kids learn best, foreign languages when they're younger. So we're taking that away so they could do it later in the year when they don't want to do it anymore. My older kid doesn't want to do foreign language anymore. They don't want to do it. We have to get it back into the full day program. It just can't, and again, we think gym is important enough at the higher level. My, my intermediate school and my, my high schooler has gym daily. Or, you know, every, a full period when they have their, their flown A B schedule. Why is it important for an older kid to have it, but not for younger kids? Younger kids is more important to have some kind of activity on a daily basis. And again, library, all they have to do is grab a book and read it. It took us till last week to start library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Are there any other comments from people in the room? Is, oh, Ms., Ms., because, sorry about that. Ms. Smith? All right. Promoting each panelist whenever you're ready.
Hi, Christina Smith, Second Vice President, HEI. I just have a quick announcement. I'm happy to announce that our postcards for postcard contest winner Jessica Herman's artwork has officially been made into a billboard. So when you're driving down Route 206 around Camplain Road, please look up and notice her awesome artwork and her great community message that we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Smith. Mr. Goodhue, I will promote you to panelists. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Goodhue.
Thank you. Henry Goodhue, Hillsboro Education Association. I appreciated the clarification from Mr. Gillette regarding class size. And that was Robin DeVincent, who had asked that question. She had texted and asked me that. I clarified that she was, it wasn't just about seeking a policy. And again, I do appreciate that Mr. Gillette clarified that. It was also about whether or not the board can set a certain metric or a certain timeline or procedure, if not a policy, that would give a clear understanding as to when class sizes could or should be expanded, so that we can start to see some control over the class sizes. More or less that we don't have students come in at the very last minute and then have to figure out where to put, you know, that 29th kid or that 28th kid, so that we can work towards trying to find the best possible solution to give them the best possible educational experience that we can within these schools. So Ms. Vincent had just asked that I clarify that. I do appreciate everything that was said in regards to class sizes tonight. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Goodhue? Are there any other comments from the public? Yes, at the, yes, thank you very much. The public kiosk. And I promoted that to panelists. Whenever, let me unmute you or ask you to unmute. I think you have to unmute at the Yeah. Yes, thank you very much.
Um, as you can tell, I'm pretty passionate about this whole thing to Mr. Owen's point over here. I was not saying
I'm sorry, would you please state your name again for the record?
Conley.
Thank you.
I was not saying anything about the teachers. I think what I said in the beginning is that you guys made the best decision with the information that you had at the time. My hope is that moving forward come September, if something should happen like this, there is a consideration that we create around table, has nothing to do with what is going on right now. I think we've all learned lessons, myself included as a parent. But I really want you to seriously consider that these decisions affected the children, families, the siblings, everyone. And I know you know because I know your parents. It has nothing to do with the teachers. Again, they did everything the best that they could with the time and the information that they had, and the same as you guys. But I'm asking you that there is a very possible, you know, there's a very extreme possibility this is going to happen in September again. I'm just asking that as a, as a community, that you really consider having parents come in and listening to what they have to say. I like the idea of the town hall. I would hope that if this comes down to it again, where we have to decide to cut our children's time in school, or we have to go to virtual days, that you hold a town hall and you let parents be involved in those decisions before making them. And that is my only request. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comments. Are there any other comments from people in the room? And then seeing none in the participant room, I will now close public comments and turn, and Mr. Pulcifer, you had a question or comment?
Actually, I have three. First one, Mrs. Smith, if we could ask, just for the public to know, you said on 206, is that headed northbound or southbound? Towards northbound. Okay, thank you. I just want to know where to look, because if I'm headed the wrong direction, I'm still not going to see anything. And I'm slow to catch up with those things driving by me. Second one, to the discussion about class sizes. I know this is, we've talked about this quite often as guidelines. The reason we say that, and certainly to the extent that we talk about a schedule, I think we should make that better known. I believe the reason we don't have a policy about class size is because there's no guarantee we can meet the policy. If I set a policy at 25 for third grade, and I have more kids than I have classrooms that can, you know, number of kids divided by classrooms is higher than 25, there's going to be more than 25. So we can't have a policy that we know we might have to break. So that's why we looked at as guidelines. We've had to adjust those guidelines. But to understand that, you know, we make a policy, we're then bound to adhere to that policy. If we make a policy that we can't meet because physically we don't have classrooms and facilities that would let us meet those numbers, we would, we would immediately be violating our own policies. So we have to be careful. That's why we've always talked about that as guidelines as to what we want to achieve. And we try to, we very much try to stay with that. And we certainly have hired new teachers when we went over those guidelines. But to the question, or to anybody who's concerned about whether or not there's a policy, we wouldn't want to make a policy that we would then have to break because our facilities don't allow us to meet the policy. Last question I'd ask, sir, clarification, if somebody from the administration can help. I believe I heard somebody mention earlier today about things that the students have not had this year, and I heard no prom. But I didn't think that was the case. I thought there was going to be a prom. Is that correct? Clarification on that, please.
Well, I can actually jump in and answer as I do have a senior. So senior prom is on. Tickets are going on sale this week, and the prom will be held at, I believe, Hilton East Brunswick as usual on Friday, June the 4th. So it is, I'm not sure about the status of junior prom. I believe that that was not, was canceled because of lack of student interest.
Yes. Does that answer the question, Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes. Yes, it does. I was just concerned because I, I thought there was a prom, but I heard somebody mention things being taken away, and no prom was something mentioned. I want to make sure we're clear on that for the public.
Thank you very much for, for bringing that up. Mr. Oliver?
Ms. Angeliano, you're not going to time me, are you? Because I could go way over. I'm kidding. So it's funny, the one comment that stuck with me tonight was Mrs. Palmer about your kindergarten teacher. And it's been a long time since I was in kindergarten, probably a lot longer than anyone in this room, but I still remember my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Sipski. And I don't know, I can't remember another teacher in my career. I remember my kindergarten teacher. So what you said tonight was very, very true. You know, one of the biggest struggles that I've come with to become a board member, and it's been a year, four months, and three days, Mr. Mahmud, I think you have it, or is that when I'm leaving? One or the other, so. But, you know, we're, we are elected from residents in the town. So we are elected officials, but we have very little power when it comes to what we do here. So, you know, we're here to set policy and guidelines. We rely on the administration to run the day-to-day operations. So, you know, when we hear comments that the board did this, we're not really doing that. Okay, we're here to set the guidelines. We, we don't have a lot to say in what happens. But that being said, in a real short period of time, we've made a lot of progress. So we are in great communication with the teachers and the teachers' union. We're collaborating. We're having town hall meetings. We're listening to the public input. You know, would I like to see more parents on the restart committee and talking about what school's going to look like in the fall and how we're going to start? Yes. But I think we're going to get there. You know, baby steps, but we are getting there. I see the communication continuing to get better each and every week. You know, we talked about the de-tracking, and there were a lot of board members that seemed to be fairly opposed to, to the de-tracking. When my family moved here to Hillsboro, wow, 1983, 1984. To me, Hillsboro was a great school district because we recognized students who were underachievers, and we had classes for them. We recognized students that were overachievers and had classes for them. So we didn't take the overachievers and put them into a regular class or the underachievers to, to, to make it to a middle of the road class or an average class. We were able to designate. And, you know, could I have afforded a lot more house in a different area? Yes. But I chose Hillsboro. I made those sacrifices because I knew I was going to raise a family. And thank God, I've had three beautiful children, have all been through the Hillsboro school system, two are still in it. And, you know, my senior's going to go off to a college of her choice. You know, my sophomore is going to, going to go off to a college of her choice. My son decided to go into public service, and he's a paramedic. So, but all afforded from a great, great education in Hillsboro, and I don't want to see that go away. I want to continue to keep those high standards. And I think we're going to get there, because I think the collaboration with the teachers' union probably has some great ideas. If de-tracking is the right thing to do in collaboration with the teachers' union, then we're going to decide that together, right? We're all in this together. We hear that repeatedly. You know, the final comment that I have, and I think we have one more board meeting before Memorial Day, right? And one of the things, again, Hillsboro, dear friend of mine, Peter Beyandi, was, was very instrumental in what I think is a, is a great event. Hillsboro has a great Memorial Day celebration. We do fireworks. We, we have a community that comes together. Hopefully, we'll still have that this year. I think we are. But remember the meaning behind Memorial Day, right? Really what, you know, we want to remember. It's not the start of summer, right? We're, we're giving thanks to our veterans, served our country. And I always remember my dad would tell me a story. My dad was in the Navy, and they were stationed in Norfolk, Virginia. And he went across the Atlantic probably 20, 30 times on a transport, bringing troops home. And this is 1952, 1954. So think of that, not too long ago. They had four or five guys would load themselves into a car, and they would drive home, get a weekend's pass. Furthest guy up north was in Brooklyn. My dad was in Somerset. He had some family in this area. Come home, visit my mom. My sister was born 1954, so come home and visit his baby daughter. And they had an African-American gentleman was stationed with them, and they would all get in the car and drive home. And diners as north as Delaware would not let him eat in the diner because he was African-American. So the, the members in the car would sit in the car with them. They'd bring food out to them. 1954. I want everyone to think of that. 1954, that was happening. But I don't want to take away from, from when we hear these things called white privilege, because I don't feel I'm white privileged. I don't feel I'm brown privileged. I, I, I'm privileged to live in Hillsboro and to have a beautiful family and to have a great community that I'm a part of. So when I hear things like white privilege, I'm not going to apologize for my race or ethnicity. My grandparents came over from Italy with 50 cents in their pocket and raised a family, had seven kids. My grandfather, to the day he died, 96, couldn't read or write the English language, spoke broken English. But they made it in this country, and they were persecuted. And it's a shame how we persecute people, but we need to embrace people for their differences and not look at the color of their skin or not look at what their race or ethnicity is. We had three girls that came on a Zoom a few meetings ago and talked about how they were persecuted in school for their religious beliefs. And that's horrible. But the only way to correct that is not by teaching it in curriculum. It's by a student, a teacher, calling out those bullies, because that's what they are, bullies, who make comments about someone and calling them out on the spot and protecting them. So as much as I'm hearing, and we had a lot of comments, there was no playbook for COVID. I'm sure Mr. Mahmud, Dr. Antunes would have loved the playbook. This is what you do. This has been on the fly, and I think we've, we've done a really, really good job. I'm thankful we're back to five days a week. Would I like to see us test maybe lunches for a couple of weeks at the end of the season to see what that looks like, maybe? There's some critical concerns over temperatures, if it gets too hot with masks. But I'm confident that Dr. Antunes, Mr. Mahmud, Mr. Goodhue, the teachers' union, they'll come up with a plan. And they're talking, they're communicating, and they'll come up with the best plan. So you know, again, I hear all the parents out there. I'm one of them. Be patient. We're, we're getting there. Baby steps, but we're getting there. I wish it could have happened sooner, but, but it hasn't. But it is happening. So let's just be patient, and we're in the home stretch. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Oliver, for your perspective.
15 minutes.
Ms., Ms. Maroon, did you have a comment? I saw you earlier, and then Ms. Stats?
Yeah, I, I just, I, I kind of share the sentiment of, you know, the patience of that everybody is doing and what the board, you know, roles really are. And I commend the teachers and the administrators for everything that they're doing. Again, with there's, there's no rulebook. In regards to the specials, yes, I, I have a son who is in elementary school, but I'm under the understanding that each elementary school does look different in their timings. So I didn't want to speak for all the elementary school kids. So I didn't want to speak for all the elementary school kids. But yes, my son does come home and he looks forward to his specials, which are virtual. And I think those teachers are doing a tremendous job, coming from a teacher who is a related arts teacher. I teach phys ed, not gym. Had to throw that in there. I'm a phys ed teacher, so I have to throw that in there. But, and it's not ideal. Would I rather him be running around in the gym? Of course I would. But again, to speak of what, you know, Mr. Oliver said, there was no playbook. And we're just trying to make the best of everything. And the administrators, you know, are doing the best they can. And hopefully, we'll all be back to somewhat normal in September.
Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Ms. Stats?
Regarding the detracking issue, from what I gather, what other people have said, as well as myself, especially myself, I don't think we're necessarily against detracking. I think it's the process that some of us has, have had concerns about and the communications thereof. The detracking issue itself is really another issue, but it's the, like I said, the process and the communication thereof. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Are there any other comments from the board? So seeing none, I do want to acknowledge that there is somebody in, I think it's Ms. Volano. Unfortunately, yes, unfortunately, we did close public comments. So by policy, we're not reopening for public comments. And so if there are no further comments from the board, then I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned at nine oh two PM. Thank you.